All right, everybody's ready? We will have the pledge of allegiance today with Commander Bala and the losing commander.
Green says, march.
Let us lead.
To the flag of the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Up, up, face. Folks, march.
All right, we appreciate that. With that, we call the main event, 24 regular meeting of Coffee County Board of Education. And Mr. Ball, would you give your application?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ball, I pray. Good Lord, thank you for loving us and blessing us and hearing our prayers, Lord. We just are so thankful to gather today after such bad weather, Lord, and thankful that our bus drivers got our children home, home safely, and very little damage to the green. Lord, just thank you for the hand protection, you built around our community. Lord, this Teacher Appreciation Week, we just are so thankful for all the educators that made a commitment to serve the families and students of our community, and we know the hard work and the pressures they face, Lord, and they continue to endure and make a difference in young people's lives, and we're just so appreciative. Also thankful of our bus drivers and all our other individuals who serve our students, we're just thankful for their service. And also appreciative of our board members and their commitment and time and energy and effort to our community, and we just ask that things that we do and say tonight in this meeting, the way we conduct business, is pleasing to your side, in your name I pray. Amen.
All right, everybody's got a chance to look at the agenda, some discussion about the agenda.
I do have one item where we added to move the three bids to the separate order.
Yes, folks, with their B and C.
Yep, yep. Website, please.
Did that take care of it?
All right, remember that. All right, so with that, we have a motion to adopt the agenda that we got on the website with two changes being made to take B and C and put behind the A on the agenda.
You don't have to do that.
Okay, I do.
It's already been.
All right, so do we get a motion to approve this with seven generals? As presented. How's the son of gentlemen here?
See, I'm all approved.
What's going on?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move, we accept the initiative.
All right, can I motion? Second, all in favor?
That's funny, I was looking at the electronic version online, it already been done.
All right. Want a couple, Lee?
Yes, sir. At this time, we have our mission and vision, destination, graduation for college career in life, and graduation is coming up June 1st, so we are almost there. We've got less than 25 days until students graduate, and we've got around 450 students who will be graduating, and we're really excited about the progress that we've made this year. So, vision, creating a stronger community, doing equitable and excellent education for every student. We've got a great community and a lot of, a lot of good things happening, and so we just want to continue to build all that. So, support culture and climate, we have a special recognition tonight, and so, Ms. Benita Lott, we give our special recognitions.
This week being Teacher Appreciation Week, it is a very fitting week to be able to honor our Teachers of the Year for the 2024-2025 school year, and this is a recognition that the peers and the administrators of each field will come together, and they recognize, they choose who their teacher is, so it, to be selected from your peers is even a bigger honor when those that work with you every day know your work and efforts, and they just know your work. And so, without further ado, I want to walk through who our Teachers of the Year are for Coffee County this year. Ms. Regina Beal is the Teacher of the Year from Ambrose Elementary School. We have Lydia Davis from Broxton Mary Hayes, Nicole Merritt from Eastside Elementary, Tracy Sears from Indian Creek, Stephanie Lewis from Nichols, David Summerlin from Satilla, Renee Wells from West Green, Amanda Carver from Westside, Ingrid Roberts from Coffee Middle School, Mike Sutcliffe from George Washington Harbor, Sylvia James from Coffee High School, and Clay Davers from Wiregrass. And all of these teachers will be submitting an application for the Dish Brown or Teacher of the Year, which will be named at convocation in August. So, we're just, we're very proud of these teachers, and they will all have an opportunity to be recognized at the convocation, and then our, our county winner will be awarded at that time. And the next award that I would like to be able to share with you are students, and students are just as fun to recognize as our teachers are. And we have two Coffee County students that were recently selected as state winners in the 2024 Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition, and these students, they won Coffee County, they won our RISA, and then they won the state. Will Cheryl, third grader from Westside Elementary School, and Shannon Wooton, the sixth grader from Coffee Middle School, were named statewide winners in their respective grades. The students each won at their school level and at the RISA level, but this competition, them to be able to win at the state level, the purpose of this, and both of these students exemplify this, the purpose of it is a writing competition to encourage students to develop and enthusiasm for the expertise of their writing, to provide them with the opportunity to be able to celebrate the process of writing, and both of these students have obviously excelled to be able to make it all the way to the state level. So, this is, this is a huge honor to have in our system, two stu-, two different students that make that.
And I will say that I checked it out, I went on the website for the Young Authors that, they truly were picked from across the state. There were school districts from all, from Atlanta to Columbus to Savannah to the mountains of North Georgia to the coast of South Georgia. These students are state champions in writing, so, and there's only one per grade for the whole state, so that's incredible, yeah, so, great job to our students. All right, thank you, Ms. Lott. And next, we have our consent agenda, our minutes from our last month's meetings, then we have our monthly financial reports that we reviewed in the work session. We have the Oki Finoki RISA contract, the surplus property, it's some CTAE equipment, and it's from the middle schools, some woodworking equipment. We have the revised policy KG use of school facilities, we have the five-year facility plan, and this, by approving this, we will make application, and we will create a new five-year facility plan, and in that new five-year facility plan, we will include the new school for George Washington. So, this will allow us to receive up to approximately $7 million in state funding for the new George Washington school, which is really exciting, so. The next item is the NJO TC multipurpose parking, the change order. This will allow us to go from 15 parking places, the back of the high school, to 50 parking places at the back of the high school, the new parking lot. All right?
All right, discussion? Not, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, we accept the consent agenda, Mr. President.
Motion? Second, Mr. Ray, all in favor?
All right. The next item on the agenda is the paper bids that Ms. Lewis presented at the work session, and the board has been presenting the paper bids.
Have a motion to approve the paper bids for Mr. Mutual, five motion, Mr. Ray?
Second.
All in favor?
I'll be doing the same thing.
Mr. President, is it standing? All right?
All right, the next item, C, is the food bids for FY25.
We have a motion to approve the food bids, Mr. Ray? You have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Do you stand it?
I'll be present.
All right, thank you, and I have no need for executive session. High-quality workforce, under high-quality workforce, we have our personnel recommendations that the board was presented with. I would ask the board to approve the personnel recommendations.
Have a motion to approve the personnel recommendations, Mr. President.
I'll move, we accept the personnel recommendations, Mr. President.
Second, Ms. Johnson, second, all in favor?
Thank you. And next, we have a report under high-quality workforce, an update from the board on the high-quality workforce and demographics data report.
Hello, Jan, thank you for giving me the opportunity to walk through our strategic plan update for Goal Area 3. This is a time of year that, that fits perfectly to look at our Goal Area 3, which is a high-quality workforce. We are in the throes of recruiting and hiring new teachers. It's an exciting time of year to be able to bring in new teachers, and it's also the time that we have to look at our teachers that are retiring and replacing, so, you know, it's a very, very busy season, but it brings us lots of opportunity to grow. So, our Goal Area 3 is high-quality workforce. Our performance objectives, there are three main objectives, and the first is to retain highly effective people in all our positions. And to quickly just remind what this means, we're looking to develop, support, and retain our teachers, our leaders, and our classified staff, and the first thing that we do is gather data, begin to look at where we are, what we've done well, what we could improve on, and build from that based on the data that we got. The next area is to evaluate staff, provide relevant professional learning, and through learning focus, through the wonderful opportunity we've had with capturing kids' hearts, we're able to also have leadership boot camps for some of our new leaders, mentor programs for our new teachers, we're really working to build their capacity to retain the staff that we have. And the third performance objective is to recruit and hire high-quality people in all positions. And our action steps that work with this, we really are working hard to build relationships with our colleges, to build relationships in our community, to strengthen our job payers, looking at bringing back retired teachers to fill positions that are some hard-to-fill positions. We work very close with our RISA, they offer our Georgia TAP program, and many colleges throughout our state that offer MAT programs to really build, build our teachers that we already have, but also strengthen our, our pool of teachers by gaining more certified teachers. The second initiative is to strengthen our minority recruitment, and you'll see in the data that I'm going to show in a few minutes that we really have a need to strengthen our bilingual staff, and we're working through job payers and other means of advertisement to really try and build that, and also to recruit the staff, to recruit support staff and other populations. The next thing that I want us to look at, just to, to start looking at our data, as you noticed, I said, through each of these pieces of our performance, we want to start with our data, see where we are, see what we've done well, what we need to continue, and other ways that we can grow. So, our students are obviously the core of why we do the business we do, and to look at our graduation rate, you can see that there has been a positive trend in our graduation rate until COVID, and then there has been some learning loss at that point, but we still can see positive trends with our Black, Hispanic, and white subgroups all leaking at different times. In 2023, our Black subgroup led our graduation rate. One thing that we have to look at with our student population is, who are we? What is our, what does our student body look like, what does it represent? From 1998 to 2024, there have been some pretty significant shifts in our population and what we look like as a county. In 1998, we had 61-plus percent of white students. That is down almost 20%, we're down to 42% of our students, of white students in 2024. Our Black population went from 33 to 29, about a 4% decrease, but our Hispanic population went from 4% to 23.4. It has quadrupled plus more than that in this amount of time. So, as you can see, our needs are ever-changing based on the population of the students that we have the opportunity to teach. So, in saying that, let's look at our five-year history of our certified employees. And this chart, I really want you to focus over to the right-hand side, looking at from 2019 to 2023, that's the most accurate data that we have from our CPI report that is sent up to the BOE. Our Black subgroup in 2019 was at 11.6, and it has raised to 14.13 in 2023. Our minority subgroups, 14.5, and has raised to 17.78. So, we've seen gains, so we've seen positive gains in both of those in the number of certified employees, but obviously, we still have gains to go. So, that's where we start with this data to see what things have we done well, what things do we need to continue to work on. So, I have two charts of leadership demographics that I want to share combined.
So, let me stop your others, so if you go back to that last slide, so, looking in 2019, we had 11.64% Black certified staff.
Yes, sir.
And in October of '23, we have 14.13% Black certified staff. So, we've increased the Black certified staff by 3%?
Yes, sir.
But there has been a steady increase, so we're not losing Black teachers.
Right, there has been a steady increase and then almost a bit of a jump from '22 to '23. You know, it was slow and steady, and then the jump was an increase. We've had a good significant increase from '22 to '23, and a steady of the, of the other minority subgroups as well, yes, sir.
So, and if you just lump minority, that, I guess that would include Black and Hispanic. We've gone from 14.51% minority to 17.78% minority, so we, we've not gone backwards.
No, we, we, we have gained the number of teachers in all of those, and if you look at the raw data of the total certified teachers, you can see that we went from, our Hispanics from 14 to 18 teachers, our American Indians have stayed the same, Asian, we gained one, you know, but our Black teachers, we went, we've gained 20 Black teachers from '19 to '23, from '73 to '93, so 20 teachers.
So, that's five years we've gained 20 Black.
20 teachers, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next group I want us to look at are our leaders. So, our leadership demographic data, starting 2011, 2012, this is just a, a ticking sheet of everybody, but if you notice our percentages, and I'm going to show you this in a little better view in just a moment, we have overall 16% of our leaders for the entire county are, we have Black leaders, we do not have any, any Hispanic leaders yet.
Now, that was in 2011, 2012, I just want to be very clear.
And so, I'm going to show a comparison of the two, so if you'll, go ahead, Logan. 24, 25, this is the upcoming school year. We're staffed with our leadership for the upcoming school year. Our, our numbers have grown significantly to school level 27.7%, overall 24%. But Logan, if you'll scoot to the next slide, you can see it here.
Hold on, I, I want to make sure I can follow that data. Go back to that one, 2011, 2012, so it looks like we had two Black assistant or minority assistant principals in 2011, 2012. Now, go forward to the 2024, 2025, this is, this comes, we'll have five minority assistant principals, all right, so we've more than doubled the number of minority assistant principals.
Yes, sir, and, and deans as well.
All right, deans, oh, I didn't even notice that. All right, go back, go back to 11, 12, on the deans, we had two minority deans in 11, 12. And go back, so 24, 25, we'll have four, so we've doubled the number of minority deans, all right?
Yes, sir. And this is taking those two pieces of data and just putting them together in view so you can see both that. The first is school level leadership.
Hold on, hold on. Will you go back, you go back to the 11, I will look at the district leadership.
Okay.
So, we had minority district leadership, we had two minority, no, two minority principals, so if you go forward, now, next year, we will have one minority principal, all right? So, that clearly is, we'll have one less principal than we had been, all right, all right? So, but go, go back to the central office. I mean, I think this is a, there's a lot of data there that's, is pretty rich. So, if you go to 2011, with the district leadership, I want, look, I'm trying to look at district, that's the, all right?
That's second, right?
All right, so we had one minority in 11, 12, at the district, but it'd be the central office, it'd be the board office. We had one minority at the central office, and that was, all right? So, if you go to now, district leadership.
We have two.
We'll have two.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. So, we've gone from one minority at the central office to two minorities at the central office. So, we've seen growth there, all right? Great, go ahead.
But this is just bringing those two pieces of information together, just showing that at the school level, we went from 19% of our leadership to 27% of our school-level leadership, then 10% to 18, 16 to 24, and that 16 to 24 is a combination of the, it is just simply saying everybody. And so, we have, we've been able to see growth from 16% to 24% of our leadership in the district has grown, so, you know, again, looking at our data, our purpose is to see what we've done, has it made a difference? It has made a difference, so there are things that we've done, we feel like we've done well, and we need to keep doing, and then other things we still see that we're going to, that we need to add to to continue, because we still have, we still have a lot of work to do, but we've done a lot of things that are, that are beginning to show change. And so, here, I want to land on our leadership distribution within our county. And the way this is broken down is, the first bar is percentage of our leaders that are white leaders that have a degree but are not in a leadership position, okay? These are people that have a Tier One or Tier Two certification but are not in a, you know, you know, that are in a position. Our second group are not, so your first level, they're in a leadership position, your second are whites that have a degree but are not in a position. Your third are your minorities that have a degree, obviously, and are in a position, and the fourth have a degree and are not in a position. So, what you can see here is that out of the percentage of our white population of educators that have the degree versus have the degree and in the position, in the position, 57.8% are in the position, 42% are not in our minority group, 57% are in a position, 43% are not. So, out of the amount of people in each group that have the qualifications to be a leader, we're very, very, very similar in the amount that are in the position. Does that, does this make sense? I want to make sure that I'm clear on what I'm saying, what this is, is presenting.
Yeah, that it, it means that if you've got 57% of the whites that have the leadership degree.
Yes, sir.
Are in leadership, 57% of the minorities who have the leadership degree are in leadership.
Yes, sir.
All right, so that's. Reminds me of that slide with equity, where you have the, you know, look in at equity, all right?
So, now, I think it's very, very relevant for us to start at the national level and look at how, how do we stack up against the others in our nation? This data is from 2021, that's the most recent that the national percentages have been put out. What you see here is, there are 6% of the national teachers that are Black. 15% of students nationwide in public schools are Black. 9% of our teachers are Hispanic, 28% of our students are Hispanic. 80% of the nation's teachers are white, 46% of the nation's students are white. So, nationally, we have a very, very small pool of Black and Hispanic educators to pull from. There's a much larger amount of white educators than Hispanic and Black, so this is where we're looking nationally. So, then the next slide is going to show you our state. So, Georgia is doing a much better job than our nation is of retaining educators that are Black. We have 29.5% of the state of Georgia's educators are Black. Our white educators are below the national average. We have 64.8% versus 80%. Our Hispanic population, however, is, is a much smaller percent for percent than the national average. We're only at 2.5, it's only at 2.5 where nationally it was at 8%. So, we're doing, the state is doing better than the nation, and with our Black educators, a little less than the nation in our white educators, and much less than the nation in our Hispanic educators. And I say that to bring us, compare us then to our state. We've compared our state to our nation, now look at, look at Coffee County. Coffee County, our white certified educators is very similar to the national average. The national average is 80, we're at 82.9. The national average for our Black educators is at 6%, we are at 13.5, and Hispanic was 8%, we're at 2.7. Just so you can see where, what, what we have to pull from nationally, from our state and from Coffee County. And one challenge that we have in our county is, we're blessed to have a larger population of Black educators, however, they tend to be in our, in our metro area. Atlanta and Macon are the hub from, Savannah is the hub, that we've got to work really, really hard, and, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute, that things we can do to get our educators, our students that start here to stay here. And that's, that's a big push that we've got to work on, is those Hispanic and Black educators to stay in Coffee County, because we have, we have them in our state, just not have them there, they tend to go to college and not come back home. If you'll go to the next slide, Logan. I'm going to take just a minute and show you where we stand with our RISA and the districts around us. So, in our RISA, we're the first bar, and, and you know our numbers, I just spoke to them, but we sit with the lowest population of white teachers out of our RISA. We're at 82.9, and you can see the blue, that's all of the other, the other school systems in our RISA. We sit, yes, sir.
So, you mean to tell me out of Atkinson, Bacon, Brantley, Camden, Charlton, Clinch, Pierce, Ware, Coffee, nine school districts in our RISA, we're the most Coffee, nine school districts in our RISA, we're the most diverse? With certified staff, alright?
And so then, our, our black certified teachers in Coffee County at the thirteen point five. And you can see the second closest would be Camden or Ware. But we still sit, we still, still have a stronger population than they do. And again, this is something that we have to work really hard to try and maintain that because all of the others around us have fewer. So every time they have an opening, they're pulling before we can have an opening. So it's, we really, really, really fight a battle of surrounding counties. You know, our teachers going, that live closer to those counties, move into those surrounding counties. Because they, they have needs, their numbers are not even as strong as our numbers are. We all have lots of room to grow, but their numbers are not as strong as ours. So let's look, let's compare to our surrounding counties. These counties touch Coffee County. So in looking at our surrounding counties, you look at Coffee County, Ben Hill County is sitting point two percent less than Coffee County is as far as white educators. So other than Ben Hill, we still sit below every other county around us. And with them, we are within point two percent of being the same. Our population of black teachers in Coffee County is the strongest next to Ben Hill. And that's what that makes up, that difference, their population of Hispanic teachers is much less. We're at two point seven. And I failed to mention on the slide prior, but I wanna mention on this one. Atkinson County has a stronger Hispanic population of teachers than we do. Atkinson was also on the last slide because they're in our RISA. But I just wanna make sure that I share that, that we stand best. We have, we have more Hispanic teachers outside of Atkinson than our RISA and our surrounding counties. We have more black certified teachers than our RISA and our surrounding counties, except for Ben Hill where they're one point five percent ahead of us. And as far as our black teachers, they're just a good bit lower in the this man.
But you said one point, they're not one point five percent ahead of us, we're at eight point...
We're at thirteen point five of black teachers, yes, sir.
As far as diversity, they've got eighty-two point seven percent white teachers. And we got eighty-two point nine percent white. So we're basically the same as Ben Hill as far as diversity of certified staff and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
And so then, the last comparison is looking at districts that are similar size, Coquettly, Tiff, Wayne, those that are similar to us. And again, we're sitting at eighty-two point nine. We have the, the most diversity out of these. We have the lowest amount of white teachers, the largest amount of black teachers, and the largest amount of Hispanic teachers out of all of the comparable districts that sit around us. So looking at that, I know that that is a lot of data to absorb in one sitting. But what, we have dug and dug and dug into our data, trying to see what are we doing well? What do we need to work on? What do we need to keep doing? And, and in saying that, what we found is some things that we have, have done, like Georgia TAP, we need to continue working through that. We have a parent teacher program that has just really been a wonderful asset that Coffee County, we, we have many parent professionals. We actually had three graduate this morning that we are hiring that were able to do their student teaching in their classroom. They continue to have benefits and be paid. And, and we can scoop them right in and become teachers. We also have a very tremendous relationship with South Georgia State College and got released an opportunity to go to their graduation this morning. Well, the graduates from there are graduating with an early childhood and sped dual degree. Well, out of those forty-five graduates this morning, three of those graduates were black students. We've already hired our three of them. Out of the, the three Hispanic, we've hired two, one is going back to our home county. And then we've hired, out of the thirty-five white students, we are, we have potentially hired seventeen of them. So we're working really hard to be able to bring in certified staff, but also as many students that are, you know, that can help get our diversity from that group.
My question, so did you say there were forty-one graduates at South Georgia College this morning in the education department? There were four?
There were forty-five graduates this morning.
Alright, alright.
And out of those, there were, there were three Hispanic and three black students.
And we hired all three of the black students?
Yes, and two of the Hispanic, yes, sir.
So out of, out of forty-some-odd students, only three were African-American?
Yes, sir.
And we hired all three?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
And we had great opportunities with them.
There were three Hispanic, and we had two of the Hispanic.
Yes, sir.
I think that, that's a good job, thank you.
Yes, sir. And, okay, but, and he just mentioned to ensure that everybody understands what Georgia TAP is. And Georgia TAP is a program that we allow someone with a four-year degree to come in, begin teaching, and then while they're teaching, they gain certification. They gain that certification while they're being paid, they student teach within their own classroom. And we have had a lot of success with Georgia TAP. Another program is the MAT, which is the Masters of Art in Teaching. Someone can come in with a bachelor's degree and begin teaching, same process as TAP. TAP is just provided through our RISA. And so we partner with Okefenokee RISA and Wiregrass RISA to be able to allow these, these students and teachers, they're both at the same time, to teach for us while they're, while they're earning their certifications. Both of those have been, have been really, really good, good for us.
Do, yes, sir. Do we ever recruit the historically black colleges in the state of Georgia?
Oh, yes, sir, we, we go to job, we work really hard to go to a large amount of job fairs. One thing that we have had to begin to reboot with is that job fairs are somewhat becoming a little obsolete. They're becoming online. And so that personableness, we have, that's, you know, when we look at this, we have to go, what have we done well? Well, that's something that was done well, but the opportunity isn't there as much anymore. So we're having to look at other opportunities of doing virtual interviews and really, really pumping social media. That's, that's been one of our major markets is social media. That's where this age group sits, they're on social media. We obviously keep our Facebook and our Instagram pages up with our postings. Teach Georgia has our postings. Our YAWS platform that we went to this past year has all of our postings, which are funneled from our school website. So we really try to keep that information out there as much as we can. Our Chamber is really good about helping also to push out those positions for us, for our certified, as well as those classified job fairs that we do, we do here. And, and a couple of other things that I did wanna leave you with, and just looking at what we can do to continue. We're making strides, but to work to continue to build our, build our Hispanic and our black certified teachers and leaders. Looking at getting people tier-two certified to be able to move into those positions. Looking at our current staff, offering boot camps to really help them become leaders. But one thing, on Tuesday, I had an opportunity to go to Coffee High and join the educator signing day for the CTAE students. And twenty-five students signed that they potentially will go into education. So our job as a community is to wrap around them, support them, help them, because it was a room full of black, Hispanic, white, mixed races of students that truly represented the population of Coffee High School. And if we can foster those students to become teachers, then we're, that's a big game for us and continue each year to build on that. So that's something that I really ask of the board of the community is to help positively promote our school system, education itself, to help these young people embrace this career, see that they can, they can stay in Douglas, go to South Georgia, work as a parent pro. There's so many opportunities that we, we are the ones that can help support that and bring them here. So that's really the biggest, the big thing that, my piece of strategic plan, our goal area in creating that high-quality workforce is looking at more innovative ways to recruit those and bring in a diverse population, as well as to continue to use professional learning and mentors and capture kids' hearts to keep the quality people that we have here. Any questions? I know that was a lot of data, yes, ma'am.
But Terry, that we got at the March retreat?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought I heard that.
Yes, there are a couple of things that we've, data that we've gotten since then because we're continually looking and digging, but yes, ma'am, this, that was that information.
Maybe I was asking a question, just thinking out loud, but I think the first couple of slides you showed which are where our student percentages went from ninety-eight in two thousand four.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I think it's kinda well documented what we've tried to do to recruit with, with historically black colleges and things like that, trying to recruit, recruit black educators. Like our Hispanics are running a close second in minority status in two thousand twenty-four. And obviously, we don't have the ability to go to stuff like that. And again, it's probably more thinking out loud than a question, but where do we go? What do we do to try to increase that? Because to me, that's the biggest gap, is the number of Hispanic students we've got compared to the amount of teachers we've got. You know, how, I mean, what's our avenue for trying to find ways to, you know, recruit Hispanic educators?
The first thing that I'm beginning to see success with is starting at the high school level. These young students, typically, if someone is in, is not in education in the Hispanic population and they're already in their thirties or forties, it's not as easy to recruit them in. But we've been working with, we have migrant employees that were, they, when I say they're out in the community, they are out in the community, and they, they are helping us to share being a parent professional. And then once we get them in the buildings, we've got other teachers and administrators saying, hey, you were so good at this, let's look at, look at going to do the parent teacher program. So based on age, we're looking at, can we get you into parent? And then hope that we can work with them.
Know your own.
Yes, I mean, that, that really is our, is our number one area is, is the, where you're on in that population.
And I would think that at this point, going from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand twenty-four, a lot of that population is not as migrant as they were.
Yes, yes.
I would think, they do tend to stick around and plan to go to school here and stay, maybe.
And that's where having our academy model and that CTAE track, that there are two tracks, that those students, they go and actually do practical work. They're in the classrooms, they're working with students. That if we can ignite that love of teaching in them at the high school level and, you know, if they have hope there at South Georgia, there's no financial obligation to them that we really can try to bring them in. And that's an avenue, we're still looking for other opportunities, but that's one way to try and, try and catch some of them. But we've got a lot of catching up to do in that population.
And another sort of rule that we don't talk about, fifty percent of our students are what? Male. Look at our teeth, you know, we just don't have a lot of males that, that are going that route. You know, how do we encourage more than probably at, at that level too?
Well, that's what, if, if I got the South Georgia graduation data correct, you had thirty-five white graduates, you had three black graduates, three Hispanic graduates. And of those, three were male. So you only had three males out of all of those, just like we don't have very many African-Americans graduate from South Georgia College with education degrees. We don't have very many Hispanics graduate from South Georgia College with education degrees. We don't have very many males.
I mean, when it's very, 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 yes, sir.
So we need to really encourage that.
Michael, she's saying is that at high school level, we try to get more males.
Yeah.
And we, we were brainstorming ideas on Tuesday of funneling one class that is for males. And really look at the, the places that fewer males go to be an elementary teacher. So rather than that practical track, taking them to the elementary, can we bring them to, if, if they go elementary, can they shuttle coach? Can they go to the P E? Can, the things that are gonna attract their attention more, those are, those are the exact things we're looking at. How can we work with them?
You know, a hundred percent, how many of them are making, all the good, they're calling them to coach, you know? So there's got to be a better plan for, you know, kind of encouraging young males going into education.
That's right. Well, and you know, the, the, the whole thing of our kids, you know, in order to be it, they gotta see it. And they gotta see that leader who looks like them. They've gotta see that teacher that looks like them. I mean, that, that is important. And so, you know, we want our kids to have those leaders in the classrooms and those leaders in the buildings. So this whole grow our own, it's all really important. And so, thank you for the work that you do.
We will appreciate it, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, let's see, my computer shut down through all that, I'm so excited. We've got the public comments. Is there anybody here for public comments? Alright, I had Michael Newton had signed up for public comments, he's not here, alright? And then I had Melody Ricketson had signed up for public comments, and she's not here. Alright?
Anything else? All right, we're turning, board member's student comments.
Yes, sir. West Green, I talked with the architect yesterday. He said that they are on the last approvals from the state department, that they were requested, he's requesting not to put, they don't have any fire hydrants out there now. And in part of the application, it mentions fire hydrants. And he's trying to get that waived because he sees no reason, if you don't have fire hydrants out there now with the water system that we have out there, we have to run off of that water system. That he's trying to get approval not to add fire hydrants that we don't already have out there. So that's, he said as soon as he gets through that approval process with the state, the plan should be ready to go out for bid within the next month, two months, something like that. So it's, he's on the final approval process with the state. I know they were out there today, Michael was here earlier. He said he was meeting with the engineer about the sewage plan and looking how they're gonna run the new sewage system out there. And that they were planning how that new sewage system will be set up. So it's in the final planning stages. Michael's gonna bring by the renditions that we've already looked at, you've seen those plans. But it's getting close to be ready to go out for bid.
What was the, they were in June, right? What's the June?
I think we're still on that course, yes, sir.
I'll say one thing real quick, board member comments. A lot of times we have, we have weather issues that we have to decide whether we're gonna go to school or not. That big ball, we're gonna play with the council, if we don't cancel, what have you. There's sometimes that we have weather coming in, but, you know, we just gotta take chances, send these kids to school. We understand, we've got staff out there that'll take care of them. We had weather that came in today, it was unexpected. And probably some of the work weather we had in quite some time. And I know this from Mr. Bobbly, some of our, our officers and principals and teachers and all, and this is teacher appreciation week, but they all did a phenomenal job taking care of the kids, making sure everybody was put in safe environment. So sometimes when we send these kids to school, we don't really know what's gonna happen with weather. It's because we know we've got a staff like this, teachers, principals, you know, superintendents, bus drivers, what have you, that are gonna take care of the kids. And I think y'all did a great job today, I appreciate all of y'all's effort, everybody in the school system, keeping the kids taken care of. So it makes our job a lot easier when we know we've got people out there.
Thank you.